Kimberly Lynn Mollin, I am the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce here in Hermosa Beach. I want to thank you all very much for coming here this evening. And we hope to stay on schedule and bring you some very important information. So, thank you. First quarter of business, I would like to invite you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would rise please, the flag is up here in the corner. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very quickly, before we get on with the program, I would just like to acknowledge a few people in the room. First, from our city, I see we have Mayor Promtem Jeff Clob in the act. See you here in front. We have Hanny Van Mary and Stacy Roboto, current council members and also incumbents in the election. Carolyn Petty is here. And I'd like to also welcome the City Manager Sergio Gonzalez. Mayor Massey here, I didn't see him if not, will acknowledge him if he comes. In addition to that, I would like to also thank my Board of Directors who put this event together and a number of members here tonight. We have Adrian Slaughter, Janice Webb, Janice Britton, Kathy Bonifidi, Ron Newman, Andrea Jacobson, Michael Gorgon, Marty Bennett, and we have Manny Serrano on our Advisory Board. And your moderator Julie Hammel, who I will introduce in just a moment. And further, just a few other special guests. We have former council members and mayor Kathy Dunbavin and George Farks. We have Marie Rice from the Planning Commission. We have Lauren Pizermaines from the Parks and Rec Commission. And Elle Benson from EPA. And lastly, before we start, I would also like to thank our sponsors. We had three this year. I would like to thank Cow Water, Dan and Sean are here, thank you for joining us and for being a part of the community. Athens is here, Steven, I think you are still here as well. And Mike Bell from Bell Events, who has coordinated all of our audio and video. So, moving on, please make yourselves comfortable. Housekeeping again, please check your phones. For those of you that have not been here in a while or before, the bathrooms are outside and around the corner. We are Facebook lighting this on the Chamber's Facebook page, and we're also recording it to post to our website after the event is over, so please look for that. So, I'd like to introduce to you now our moderator Julie Hammel, who is also on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Alright, everybody. Thank you for coming, thank you all for being here, and thank you for dedicating your time to serving the Republic. I'm Julie Hammel, I'm a local attorney at La Rosa Hermosa Beach. And we're going to start out with opening statements. Each person's going to have 60 seconds. Then we're going to go to a lightning round, where I'm going to ask yes or no questions. And you each have a paddle in front of you. One side says yes, the other side says no. Check the paddles, make sure you've got that. After that, we'll come to long form questions. I'm going to read the question, and then draw two names out of a hat. And we will go in order of the names that I draw. After that, we'll have closing statements. Each person gets a minute, and we're going to conclude at nine o'clock, when everyone can go home. So, if you're not asked a certain question, because we're limited to two candidates per question, please feel free to answer it in long form on your candidate websites. We'll post the links to all of your websites in the Chamber Facebook page. And I've consulted with the city attorney, and I want to be clear that I'm not asking you how you're going to vote on any sort of district proposal. I am asking how you feel differently about this at this moment, to avoid any sort of conflict of interest or round match violations. Okay. So, with that, we are going to go with candidates' opening statements. And because I drew randomly the order in which you're sitting, I'm going to start with Trent, and we will go all the way to the end, and Peter will conclude. And we have the lovely Janice Webb, who's going to be keeping time, and we'll hold up a 30 second, 15 second, and a stop sign for you. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Trent Larson. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's very nice to see this packed house, it really shows everybody cares. And I am running because I want to make Hermosa Beach first on the priority list. My core campaign message talks about doing things for Hermosa that are both visible and usable. I would like to see us put our tax dollars to work fixing our public spaces, our sewers, our roads, the Green Belt, the reconstruction of our schools, also our business district, city cleanliness, and other things that we've sorely been lacking doing. We have lost our focus and not spent our money on the city, and that's what I think we need to do. Also, I'm offering constructive collaboration and working with city leaders to deliver reasonable and deliverable solutions. I want to preserve our small town character and charm. I want to focus on upgrading our police and our fire facilities, and also transparent Hermosa Beach governance, the act of governing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to the Chamber for this debate, and thank you, sir, for being here to hear our input. I've been honored to serve on the council for the last four years. I've been privileged to do that and really enjoyed it. Over the last few years, we've got a lot accomplished. We've done some significant improvements by basically getting the oil drilling issue completely off the table and out of the way. We've supported the schools to pass madres for additional school improvements. We went through an extended process for the fire department to get the fire services improved. And going forward, if I get the honor of your votes, looking into getting things done, I think using transport, it's visible and usable, looking for infrastructure improvements. So, yesterday, we had a study session to talk about improvements in the city. On October 10th, we have a meeting to talk about the master plan for streets and ADA. We also have some public safety issues that we have a task force working on, problems with EV109 and problem 47 that's causing pushes on some crime issues in our city. So, looking forward to working on that if I get the privilege of serving again with the next term.
Thank you.
Good evening, Hermosa Beach, my name is Matt McCool. One of the reasons why I wanted to go in and run for City Council is I believe the environmental issues in the city have taken precedent over public safety. I am running as a public safety candidate. Most people running on public safety talk about it, but I actually have records to run off. I currently am your emergency preparedness commissioner. I'm a former reserve and volunteer firefighter with Walt Disney Studios Fire Department and Warner Brothers Fire Department. I also serve as a reservist in the United States Navy, which is important because these are paramilitary organizations, so I can talk the talk and walk the walk with our firearm police services. I also have served on our emergency response team for SERVE program. I'm also an instructor within that program. I serve on neighborhood watch, and I'm a lock captain as well, and I've completed the Community Police Academy. So, public safety is something I definitely believe in, assuming Hermosa Beach, and it's something I'm running on.
Thank you. Good evening, Hermosa. I'm Mary Campbell. I'm an organizational consultant and executive coach, and also a current school worker. I believe we have a lot to accomplish over the next five years, and in my opinion, we really need to get it right. I've been asked to share my top three priorities, and they are as follows. Number one, to grow a thriving local business economy. I really think we need to reinvent our approach as a city, and as a chamber maybe, to how we are approaching the process. Needs to be very proactive, nuanced, and in the spirit of true partnership and mutual trust. Number two, we need to upgrade our city infrastructure, because it's really old. And we cannot grow and build on a brittle foundation. This is our facilities, streets, sidewalks, sewers, and strawberries, as you know. Number three, we need a really skilled implementation of our Plan Hermosa. It's the first master plan we've had in almost 40 years, and we have got to do it right. Implementation, execution, project management, accountability, and fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you for trusting me to serve as your council member. I'm a mother of three children, a wife of a small business owner, a homeowner, and an attorney. As a member of your city council, I have supported funding capital improvements for sewers, streets, storm drains, sidewalks, and South Park. Business-friendly measures like approving A-frame signs, extending our holiday parking hours, and cleaning up our downtown. We earmarked new non-resident tax revenue to fund our new fire station. And I've helped end the costly, decade-long threat of oil contamination in the city. My top priorities will all look towards three things. Full community input, fiscal responsibility, and improving our quality of life when basing any decision. And over the next five years, I'm prepared to deal with the important decisions connected to transition to the new fire service, the protection and preservation of our open space, the proposed downtown hotel, and improving the aesthetics, cleanliness, and safety of our downtown, so our businesses can thrive and our residents and visitors can feel welcome. Thank you, everyone here in the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. I want to thank the Chamber for hosting this debate tonight. I also want to thank the Chamber for partnering with the City of Hermosa Beach for many of our civic activities and events. I'm Peter Tucker, I'm a 45-year resident of the City of Hermosa Beach. I was a general contractor for 35 years. I'm currently serving as a Senior Building Inspector for the city to the southwest of Hermosa Beach, I've been there 15 years. I have over 35 years of community service. I'm running for Hermosa Beach City Council to represent you, the residents, and to assist current and future businesses to thrive. Without businesses in Hermosa, we lose a key element of our small-town atmosphere. Some of my priorities are to complete the Ace Street Safe Route to School and ADA improvements from Valley Drive to Hermosa Avenue. Pacific Coast Highway Aviation improvements for a safe, sustainable transportation corridor. And I will now support the Community Choice Aggregation, known as CCA. The state mandate, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being so timely. That was really impressive. Okay, now on to the lightning round, so everybody grab your paddles. And you'll have five seconds to lift your paddle. All right. Question number one. Are you in favor of installing a child-friendly attraction on Pier Plaza?
Higher.
Higher.
Should we read out the answers, or can people see? Okay. Number two. Do you favor complaint-driven code enforcement, meaning officers only issue a citation upon receiving a complaint? Question number three. Does Hermosa Beach have a reputation of being a difficult place to run a business? Question number four. Do you think Fiesta Hermosa is beneficial to the City of Hermosa Beach? Question number five. Do you believe Community Choice Aggregation, also known as CCA, is good for our community? People are allowed to abstain if they would wish. Number six. Do you aspire to hire political office? Number seven. Do you support flexibility in regulatory enforcement to attract and retain business? Question number eight. Do you think the city's permitting process is efficient? Question number nine. Do you favor term limits for council members? Question number 10. Do you favor increasing building height limits downtown? Question 11. Do you support the concept of Cypress Avenue as an arts district? Question number 12. Do you believe carbon neutrality should be a high priority for the council? Number 13. Are you in favor of de-impose granite along some of the Green Belt? And for current council members, you probably shouldn't vote on this. Okay. Question 14, this is the final question of the lightning round. Do you agree that the businesses are working hard as a team to comply with the Chief of Police and the City Manager's recommendations to improve our downtown? Okay. Moving on to the long-form questions. I'm going to read the question first, and then I'm going to draw two names. Question number one. What is the most important issue facing Hermosa Beach right now, and what will you do to address it? Mary will answer first, and... I've drawn the second name, but I'm going to wait so that nobody knows. So, we'll give Mary 60 seconds.
Okay, thank you. Of my top three, I think I'll pick the first one, because I think we really need to get to work, to lay the groundwork, to build a thriving local business economy. There's a lot of components to that, it's multi-pronged, it is a lot of threads inside our Plan Hermosa that we need to get after it right away, because the zoning decisions that we make right now will impact everything that fills in as the years go by. And then the tough decisions, the smart decisions that we make together as a city and a council and a staff, will mean what we see and what our children's children see 20, 30, and 50 years from now. And so, I think there's really nothing more important than kind of rebooting how you're approaching that and trying to strengthen it in every way. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete Tucker. 60 seconds.
Yeah, thank you. The biggest issue facing the whole city is really how we financially plan our future, meaning all our infrastructure repairs we have, and mainly like the city facilities. We need a comprehensive plan, we need to step back and really ask the consultants to work with what we have now. I think last night, we had a presentation where we're up to another $100 million to fix everything. I think we need to really take a approach that tells the consultants that we don't have that kind of money, and we do what we have. So, I think that's the biggest issue. Everybody talks about that large number, but I feel that we need to really look at that and work with what we have and improve what we have and add where we need to. But I think we need to really look at that, the same thing as you were remodeling your home. Architects are many, give you a grandiose plan, but you say, "I can't afford it." And right now, we can't afford what they propose. And being in the building business and the contracting business for 35 years, I feel I have those qualifications to make sure that happens.
Thank you very much. Question number two. Hermosa Beach has inadequate parking infrastructure to support the number of residents, visitors, and businesses. Businesses are required to pay a parking-in-lift fee of $30,000 per space in exchange for the ability to use locations with an insufficient number of parking spots. This in-lift fee is a substantial barrier to entry to the small, independent businesses that make Hermosa unique. What is your proposed solution to the parking shortage? And do you think it would be appropriate to reduce or eliminate the in-lift fee? First person to answer will be Matt McCool.
Thank you, Julie. This actually came up in the last debate. I absolutely support removing the parking-in-lift fee for the small businesses. It's been a barrier for businesses to come in and start. In addition to that, as far as parking, I think we need to go ahead and encourage ride sharing here in Hermosa Beach. We currently do not have a designated area for Lyft and Uber to drop off people. I think we should encourage that, people come here and use those services. Additionally, from what I've heard from people, it's the two-hour time limit during business hours is great, but during dinner time, people need more than those two hours. And as they're placing, finishing their dinner and drinks, they're going to have to run back to the unit and put more money in. I think we should increase that to a three-hour limit, and also be able to have the technology to increase your time limit through your cell phone.
Thank you, Matt. Second person is Hanny.
So, as Matt said, this came up in our last debate as well. I do not support reducing the parking requirements for businesses. I think that parking is a problem in the city as it is, and if you reduce that requirement, you just have another problem with the issue. So, I think removing that requirement is not going to be the solution. It would be a bigger evaluation of the issue, and coming up with different solutions and different options. Some of the options that I agree with Matt, preferring to ride sharing, having that more systemized and organized. Another issue that we've talked about in the city council is also talking about the parking rates in downtown, and provided as consistent and approved by Coastal Commission, having surge pricing. Another issue that we've also had our staff look into is a shuttle service, similar to what Manhattan Beach is doing. Manhattan Beach is starting it, it was a trial process, and we were looking into doing it, following their lead and looking into what they're doing. So, it's one of the things that our staff is currently looking at as well.
Thank you. All right, the third question, another parking question. The city strictly enforces minimum parking space requirements in the zoning code, despite the reality that mandated parking simply does not exist. The result is often absurdity and waste. For example, after expanding into the old Cafe Bonaparte space, Pamia cannot use that interior of that building as a restaurant. So, now it sits vacant, when it could be bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue per year. Are you open to amending the parking requirements in the zoning code to prevent vacancy, waste, and financial burden on local businesses? And if not, how would you address these problems? First person to answer will be Stacy.
Thank you. I think the quick answer is, we have asked our city staff to come back to us on examining the parking issue that we have all through our business district in the downtown. To just say offhand, would it be okay to reduce those parking requirements? I mean, we need all the facts and information, we need to look at the downtown as a whole. We saw an issue, obviously, with Baker Burton and Lundie, when they were having to expand into the retail business next door to them, because the in-lift fees were so high, and that went, their went away, retail space. So, this is an issue high on our list of priorities, it's coming back in front of council for the next bunch of months, and I definitely look forward to talking about it.
Thank you. And the next person is Trent.
Yes, I would be open to amending the parking-in-lift fees. I think it's really quite ridiculous when we don't even have a new parking space, and we charge a restaurant or a small business owner $30,000 for that space. That money is better spent on capital improvements of that facility, so that we can all benefit from going to a restaurant with nicer tables and chairs. Parking is taking care of itself. You know, we talk about bike riding, we talk about ride sharing, we talk about other ways to get to the downtown. We're going to have a new hotel that's going to have parking inside of it. These are things that we should look at very, very closely and make changes fast, because the economy is changing, we're having a difficult time keeping retailers in the downtown area that everybody wants, and it's because the world has changed. Internet is driving down profits, and we need to get rid of these outdated parking restrictions and help our businesses thrive. Thank you.
Question number four. Hermosa Beach code enforcement officers actively seek out code violations, in contrast to other cities where officers issue citations only in response to complaints. Businesses and residents are subject to having scrutiny and fines, and code enforcement officers check some downtown establishments for violations an average of once per day. Meanwhile, property crime in Hermosa is spiking. The most recent crime reports show a 133% increase in burglary, 74.2% increase in theft, and a 40% increase in auto theft. Should Hermosa continue to use four full-time employees to carry out its proactive code enforcement policy, or will the city's resources be better spent on public safety measures to decrease crime? How will you work to reduce property crime? And the first name I'm drawing is Hanny.
So, on the question, I'm not really sure that we have four code enforcement officers that are improving code enforcement. I think it's more like two and a half, a third person doing something else in the city besides code enforcement. But we had an extended study session to talk about these issues of code enforcement, and I think the input that we gave back to staff is, there's other things to focus on code enforcement other than the businesses, especially going to the same businesses every single day. I was surprised by the presentation that we got from staff, that we have code enforcement of going to the same businesses every day to check on what they're doing. I think there's other things outside of the downtown that also need code enforcement, things going on on the beach, things going on in other areas. What I would do is basically have our code enforcement work through with our CSLs and the police to impact issues that are more lethal crime rather than just simple code enforcement. Overdrinking, people that are coming into our town drunk before they get into our cars, things like that that lead to the crimes. I think there should be more focus on that than just strictly focusing on the actual businesses themselves, I think, or this.
Thank you. Matt McCool.
Thank you, Julie. This issue actually came up in the last debate. As far as code enforcement in the City of Hermosa Beach, from our last study session that we had, it is absolutely out of control. The amount of regulation that happens for people in Hermosa Beach and businesses, if I had more time, I'd go over in detail, but probably my two favorite were when Paul Edison had his 40-year anniversary, he had to have his balloons taken down by code enforcement. But I think my all-time favorite is, and I still don't know how this hasn't made national news, was with CrossFit, when their athletes were being ticketed for running down Cypress Avenue. As far as public safety and how, I would go ahead and make this a bigger issue. As a public safety candidate who's running, I think the issue is very simple, it's been presented to itself in multiple reports, consultant boards. We don't aggressively prosecute violent offenders at every level. It's been stated for that. If we want to go ahead and reduce crime in the city, we have to aggressively go after people who commit crime. So, people, the idea of even committing crime in the city is so horrific, they wouldn't even think about it. Thank you.
All right, the next question. According to a March Daily Breeze article, since debuting in 2015, Lancaster Choice Energy is leading cash and is projected to have a $6.4 million deficit by the end of the 2017-2018 fiscal year. Was it a responsible use of public resources for Hermosa to pay the City of Lancaster $75,000 to draft a Community Choice Aggregation ordinance? And should the city continue to expend resources in pursuit of CCA? Trent?
Okay, no, we should not spend $75,000 from the City of Lancaster. Now, California leads the world in clean energy, and the United States industry is responsible for the majority of the gains in reduction. We are well on our way to cleaning up our environment. We live in the cleanest environment in the world, and California, like I said, leads the way. And the City of Hermosa Beach is piggybacking on California's carbon neutrality goals. So, to go ahead and waste our time, effort, and energy to try to come up with some other plan is just not, to me, putting Hermosa Beach first. It is a waste of council's time, and we need to focus on other things like fixing our roads, our streets, our sewers, our Green Belt, our public spaces, helping our businesses thrive, and all of the other things that the council should be focusing on. CCAs are going to die on the vine. They're not needed any longer. And it's not a good idea for us to keep going down that road. So, I would not have done it, nor will I pursue it as your council. Thank you.
Stacy. All right, thank you. It wasn't a waste of taxpayer dollars to pursue the ordinance. It was the only way we were going to be able to extract the information from Southern California Edison to know whether or not pursuing a CCA was actually going to benefit the city and the residents, or be a financial detriment. It wasn't making the decision one way or another to form a CCA. I have three requirements that we're going to need to have to pursue or even consider a CCA. It'll need to be zero to low risk. It'll need to be demonstrable benefits to residents, costs, and quality of life. We'll need to be fiscally prudent as a choice for the city and the residents. But we haven't discussed this topic in months, and as a matter of fact, the only viable model that one exists right now is with LA County, not with Lancaster. Community and council just lacks completely the information to make any kind of decision. And once we get more information, we can have a lot of public meetings, we can have lots of public discussions to decide whether or not this makes sense for Hermosa's municipality and the community.
All right, next question. Businesses located on Upper Pier and the north and south ends of Hermosa Avenue have expressed frustration that there's nothing drawing foot traffic to their locations. This is exacerbated by limited parking, lack of lighting, and poorly maintained sidewalks and landscaping. Most restaurants can't afford to stay open during the lunch hour, because they end up paying their employees more than they can sell. What should the city do to enhance the atmosphere and increase foot traffic to these businesses? Probably draw me. Pete Tucker.
Thank you. We had, Hermosa Avenue was really the next project we were going to have to do with Upper Pier. And everybody loved Upper Pier. We had many community meetings and outreach. And the result of that was what the citizens wanted and what the council wanted. That same process needs to take place on Hermosa Avenue. Without that input, we will not really know. I mean, Upper Pier, we painted the streets two or three times. But the biggest problem is we have to stop the negative talk about the pier area downtown because it affects not only the pier area, the other areas where Hermosa Avenue, the PCH and AVH, we have five business districts. And every time you hear that it's bad downtown, you think of all of downtown Hermosa is bad. So we need to start promoting this city and shopping downtown and supporting these businesses. And that's what I think we need to do. But the key thing is that we have community input. That was about a year process to look up here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mary.
Thank you. I'd just like to start at the very top because this is the way I see it. The more that we invest in the future of Hermosa and make smart decisions and create a thriving local business economy in full partnership with our local business owners, we will continue to make Hermosa Beach a really increasingly attractive place to live, place to work, and place to play. And so as that strengthens and fills in accordingly, I think the foot traffic will automatically show up. People are working downtown. They're going to go downtown to the wonderful restaurant. That said, I think there's immediate things we can also do. I think there's partnering with the people in those corridors, some of whom I've talked to, to really discuss what short-term measures we might want to engage with them on in discussion. And I actually am a fan of revisiting the more visionary plan for the Hermosa Avenue corridor. There were some great ideas in there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next question. The city faces increasing costs associated with debt service, personnel, pensions, infrastructure, and capital improvements like the city yard and sewer repair, among other things. How will you prioritize these projects? And how will you increase revenue streams for the city to help fund these obligations? First person to answer will be Hanny.
Sorry, Julie. I'm sorry. What does this stand for in the question? How do you present the question?
How will you increase revenue streams for the city to help fund these obligations?
As far as priorities, as I mentioned in the opening statement, we're right in the middle of, including yesterday and the meeting coming up on Tuesday, we're dealing specifically with these issues, dealing with infrastructure improvements for various buildings in the city. And then on Tuesday of next week, we're going to be talking about various improvements for paving, sewers, et cetera. So we're looking for input from our staff to see where the things that need a priority based on their field inspections of what needs to be done. We have the funding already approved for the sewers and the paving. So we're going to be looking for staff input to see where that money should be spent. Where they were actually, over the last six months, we're going to be preparing a master plan and we're going to be evaluating it from Tuesday. And as far as how to increase revenue, there's a couple of things. One, as I mentioned before, potentially having adjusted pricing for parking in the city to have that on-demand parking. Another thing that we're looking obviously for developments of this one hotel that's going to bring in some TOT revenue. And the other, the third thing is, I didn't get a chance on the opening statement to say, one of the priorities that we should be doing is more business improvement, business development and have somebody in the city to be able to work with the businesses to improve on maintaining the businesses and bringing in the resources that we need in the city.
All right. And the second person to answer will be Pete Tucker.
Thank you. The city does have a lot of projects we have to do and it's going to take a tremendous amount of money. One thing is we implemented, the city implemented a sewer fee. No sewer has been replaced since 2015. The city council, we put three million dollars into that fund to reduce the amount. I haven't seen a sewer yet. Our city yard, city yard, we're looking at a cost, I thought, it's about eleven million or fourteen million dollars. It's a city yard. We just need facilities to store vehicles and have our employees there. We don't need to build these extravagant buildings to run our city. We rely, one of our major industries is real estate development. Once our budget now comes from property taxes, we have these very expensive homes. And we have to treat our employees with care because without our employees, we can't get anything accomplished. So we have to treat them like you treat your own family. I employ thirty-five people as a contractor and without your employees, you have nothing. Thank you.
All right. Next question. In 2013, Hermosa Beach voters resoundingly defeated Measure B, a ballot measure that proposed to close alcohol-serving establishments in midnight. Seventy-two percent voted against Measure B, which was almost a fly of a margin as the historic defeat of Measure O. Over the past few years, however, the city has taken a hostile position against alcohol-serving establishments, seeking to limit hours, implementing aggressive code enforcement measures, and intensifying CUP reviewing procedures. The message businesses hear in the city is that the people of Hermosa want to eliminate alcohol-serving establishments or at least limit their operations to the fullest extent possible. The question is, do you think the city should strive to implement the will of the voters that's demonstrated in the Measure B vote? Or is it up to the city council members to craft a policy that they think is best? First person to answer is Matt.
Thank you, Julie. I'm glad this question was asked of me. This is something I've been speaking about before city council for almost two years now, specifically before the planning commission. We have our semi-annual CUP reviews and basically the businesses in the downtown area are basically put on trial. I've asked many times to say, can we see police reports? Can we see the statistics? Let's look at the crime that's happening in the downtown area. We don't talk about the amount of times that charges are pressed, when arrest is made, and then the conviction is made. Right now, we have a policy in downtown area that if a violent offender commits a crime in an establishment, that establishment is held accountable, not the violent offender. And this is the biggest...